Welcome, everyone, to the township public meeting of the Hillsborough Planning Board, March 9, 2023. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
Flagrant to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a breathing and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law Notice of the 2023 Annual Meeting Schedule, has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, township clerk posted on township’s website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents have been made available on the township civic clerk website, and also complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspections according with the public meeting notice. With that, may I have a roll call, please?
Commitment, or, excuse me, Mr. Delcor, is absent. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Beazin?
Here.
Mr. Scovio?
Here.
Mr. Hestag?
Here.
Mr. Radowitz?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Commitment, Chikarelli?
Here.
Mayor Lepani?
Here.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
To the west, 20 feet, and we're at 137.8. The rear yard setback, the requirement is 75 feet, we're at 1,123.5 feet. And the maximum impervious coverage, where it's 60% is required, existing is 17.3%, and proposed is 54.7%. Maximum floor area ratio, 30%, we're at 9.3%, our proposal is 27.1%. Building height, three stories is allowed, we're at one story. And minimum buffer to the residential, 60 feet is required and 84.9 feet is proposed. So the only non-conformity with the bulk standards in the light LI industrial zone is the existing minimum buffer to the non-residential portion of the property, which is 20 feet, and we're at 16.3 feet. This application does not propose to exacerbate any of those existing non-conformities. After redesign of this project, we did two main things. When we removed the subdivision line, that also removed a tremendous amount of variances in the design waivers. And as we sit here today, according to the planning review memo dated today, there is, as I indicated, the non-residential buffer, which is along the existing access roadway to the Striker Botanical property. That's under 188-1071, 20 feet is required, 16.3 is existing. Again, existing non-conformity. 108-1071G2C1, curb cut for the frontage of less than 500 feet. Again, it's the existing non-conformity that separates the truck lane from the parking lot in the front of the Striker Botanical existing structure, which is a laboratory. Under 188-1071G5B, parking shall be located inside the rear yards and not in front of the buildings. Again, there's a parking area for the employees in front of Striker Botanical, but I would note the setback is substantial and substantially beyond the required setback in the bulk standards in the zone district. And as I had indicated, under 188-1071H1, the board planner, Mr. Coys, has identified potential architectural and site design overlay standards, and specifically quoting H7, "Buildings shall have long monotonous uninterupted walls and roof planes. Individual buildings shall not exceed 100 feet in length along any wall, roof or footprint plane. Building fronts wider than 40 feet, as used from the public realm, should be modulated to break the facade, to give an appearance of several buildings, or through the use of building wall offsets, including projections, recesses, and changes in cap line, wall height, or floor level. The total measurement of such offsets shall equal a minimum of 10% of the building wall length. The minimum projection or depth of any individual offset shall not be less than four feet." So, related to the design waivers, well, I should say, related to the architecture, the project from the elevations has been redesigned to eliminate, I would say, a dozen or 20 design waivers to become a much more beautiful and attractive building, and our architect will detail those design elements that have been altered along with the removal of the subdivision. However, there are seven design waivers that are identified, okay? First one is 188-68B, "Loading spaces shall not have direct access from major interior drives." Again, existing non-conformity. "Loading spaces shall have 30-foot wide buffer on the property lines." Existing non-conformity. Parking aisle width, 30 foot, 24s provided, and parking stall size, 10 by 20, 199 by 18 is provided. Again, existing non-conformities. The loading aisle width, 63 feet is required, we're at 62 feet, so one foot short. Again, existing non-conformity. And then, as I indicated earlier, the parking to be located on the side of the rear of the building, again, existing non-conformity. So out of all of the seven design waivers, all, six out of the seven of them are existing non-conformities based upon the construction of the Striker Botanical laboratory. There's one new, I should say, design waiver, under 188-175G5, which requires metal halide lights, and this applicant has proposed LED lights. Of course, we'd go back to the old technology if that was preferred by the board. With that, I have Greg Reddington. Greg Reddington is the principal on behalf of the applicant. He's the contract purchaser. We did update the owner's authorization with respect to the removal of the subdivision, and of course, you know, we wouldn't be here if the owner wouldn't allow us to do what we're proposing. So, we did get that confirmation late today, and we did submit it to the board. So unless there's any legal questions, I would ask to swear in and introduce Greg Reddington. He is a professional engineer as well.
Okay, first I just want to ask Mr. Bernstein.
Chairman, before we even get to me, I think Mr. Torriello, for the purpose of the record, should identify himself in his...
Yes.
Microphone, Joseph, oh, sorry.
She's going to get hollered again.
You'd think I would learn by now. Joseph Torriello, on behalf of Sandra Aynella, who is a resident objector, and seated to my right is Christopher Milik, planner.
Yeah, there is a legal problem. When the applicant chose to remove the subdivision, which was the original application upon which was before the board, basically, the individual who owns the property or purported to own the property is the current owner of the property, Mr. McNally. What we got this afternoon really doesn't meet what I would consider to be a standing related issue. The board has received a copy of an email that was received at about 3:30 this afternoon, unsigned, basically indicating that he's aware of and gives his consent. The problem is, at least from my point of view, is a standing issue. The current applicant, we believe, doesn't have standing at the moment for this application because they are not the owner of the property. And an email sent over four hours before an application doesn't in any way, shape, or form, as my advice, falls under the category of a consent. The individual needs to provide more information, more indication as to how this relationship is going to occur, because ostensibly, what this board is being asked to do is allow for a second building to be built on a property that the applicant, that the purported builder does not own nor have control of. The assumption of a subdivision is the individual will assume the ownership of the property, and there was no indication in the original application that that was not the case. We are unaware and have no paperwork that Mr. McNally, who is the owner of the property, was simply engaging in a relationship with Redcom for the purposes of building a second building on the property for his use. It was an application to subdivide the property off and to build a, basically, the same building we're talking about now, on a lot which the professionals raises an issue, and the board did as well, as whether or not, in fact, that type of building could be built on a flag lot or potential flag lot in this district and related items. It is the applicant's belief that by removing the subdivision line, everything is just, these are legal doctrine hunky-dory. It is not. It is basically the same situation, just from a different point of view. We have no indication as to the, how this property is going to be owned, how the building is going to be built as it relates to whether or not the ownership of the current property is going to have control of the property, or who is going to have control of the property upon which the building exists. And knowing full well what the parties were doing, and Mr. O'Grady did indicate to you that he and his client sat down with the property owner prior to today, they anticipated an issue that was raised by Mr. Coys in his memo, and almost immediately thereafter, followed up by this email, which was not, should not have come as a surprise. So, while I realize the applicant wants to move forward, what we now have is an applicant who doesn't have control of the property, and an unsigned, unnotarized piece of paper doesn't really confirm or conform on an issue of standing. And that's really where we are, at least initially now. If at some point, Mr. O'Grady and his client will produce either Mr. McNally himself to testify on how this relationship is going to be, or a document, something more than a one, a two paragraph, partially spelled right, email as to that standing, that becomes an entirely different situation. And obviously, it's ultimately up to the board whether it wants to go forward with the application in its current situation or not. I don't believe this is handled by the infamous word that this board keeps hearing lately from applicants, which is, oh, it can be handled by a condition. A condition of approval is all of this. No, a condition of approval doesn't get, doesn't resolve the standing issue. The applicant is not the property owner, and the property owner is not the applicant. So until that situation, at least in my opinion, matches up, I don't believe this board should be hearing an application, which is now two buildings. The issue is not whether or not you can build two buildings on one lot. That's a separate issue in terms of whether this building can in fact be approved to do so. The issue is the applicant is not the property owner, and an email consent doesn't suffice, nor for the board to understand exactly the parameters of any agreements that may get made related to this building and how it's going to be effectuated if the individual in question does not own the property and may or may not be the owner of the building.
So...
Well, I was just going to say, my one main concern besides, I know, going to try to hash out who, you know, does the applicant have the ability to move forward even though they're not the owner, my problem is, this is not signed.
Well, it doesn't matter, because we submitted an application with an owner's affidavit. And we got a planner's report today at 2:30, and we immediately contacted the property owner. He's on vacation. It was not premeditated, and it, you know, this is, this would be, you know, the last hearing, we were not really allowed to fully conduct our hearing based upon, actually, I should say, we've been delayed quite substantially related to, first, the subdivision issue. This applicant has standing because they submitted the checklist item that says, Mr. McNally, Brian McNally, gives consent to file the application. We were just made aware, less than three hours ago, that Mr. Coys is raising a standing issue, okay? And immediately, within 10 minutes, I got on the phone with Greg, and we sent an email to Mr. McNally, and he responded in the affirmative. Now, why would Redcom spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in redesigning a project that they can't build because Mr. McNally doesn't agree to it? I said last time that Mr. McNally was flexible with design options, and we presented three design options. We presented the lot not abutting a street, we presented a flag lot, and we presented two buildings on one lot, which is permitted by your ordinance. If this board decides not to hear this application again because of a standing issue raised three hours ago, then I guarantee you that this board is being opened up to serious constitutional damages. This is not right. Just let us proceed. I've said time and time again, these applications are not proceeding. This applicant has standing. It's a checklist item. Why would we be here? Why would Josh Tyner spend weeks cramming to redesign this property if Brian McNally wouldn't allow it to be built? It's, we're getting on, you know, we're getting beyond gamesmanship. We're getting into serious damage exposure to this board and this municipality. Let us proceed. Let Mr. Reddington testify. He was not allowed to speak at the last hearing he was here. And let us get to the engineering, the architecture, so we can get through these applications. It's not right what's going on.
Okay, well...
I have the owner on a text string right now. He's in California with his family.
We will do, I want to understand, Mr. Coys, if the original memo, whatever we want to call it, that was submitted with the checklist, if you could just kind of explain why that's now deficient or inadequate and required a new...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so typically what happens when an applicant, you know, especially changes, updates an application such as this, they would typically also submit an updated application. And if they had provided an updated application, typically, that's, not typically, but on the application, is actually the line of the signature for the owner. So as I was reviewing all the materials, that's something that we were checking. And additionally, an applicant would normally also update, update their narrative. They wouldn't just submit materials such as plans and then not, lack of a better term, tidy up and connect all the dots and make sure that they're updating all the information. And that has all sorts of implications, not only for, you know, communicating to you as a board and to the professionals, but in terms of transparency to the public, the records that are being posted. And so that's one of the things that we would look at. We brought that to the attention of the board attorney, and we're raising it through the report, and leave it to the board on what they decide to do.
So was there no, I'm going to call it an addendum to the application to update, you know, what this, you know, the change in the site plans meant to the original application?
There were, there was a cover letter that was provided. There was also an updated narrative that had also come through today after I had raised these concerns, but when we were looking at the application, I was surprised not to see that the application was also updated. And also double-checking the owner, who the owner is, and, you know, just looking at the original application and knowing that the application has, has changed significantly to the point that we didn't have anything on the record from, from the owner acknowledging. And typically, anytime we go forward receiving an application, typically, we would get a signature. And so it was surprising to me that there was no updated application that was submitted with the materials.
Can you name one other application that, that's ever required a new owner's affidavit mid-application, when, when an applicant makes changes to a plan? Name one application.
It's not a change to a plan, mister.
I get to, I get to ask questions of Mr. Coys.
No, actually, you don't, mister, unless the chair permits it. But more importantly, this is not an issue of a change of building plan. This is a change in which the issue of exactly who's developing the property is at issue. The property owner, the original application was for the property owner to turn over to the applicant property to build on. I don't hear anybody disagreeing with that interpretation. Now what we have is an individual removing the subdivision line. The subdivision line existed there because the property was going to be subdivided. It now is going to be two, two buildings on the same property, of which the applicant is not the owner. And whether we hold up a telephone with a text message or an email, it should have been relatively apparent to the applicant that this was an issue that was going to happen. Because that's what they were, if the answer was, this is what the plan was all along, then this would have been the plan all along. And Mr. Reddington is here to build a property on behalf of Mr. McNally. That's not what this plan was. The plan was for the applicant to build a building on a property being acquired from Mr. McNally.
Mr. McNally consented to this application amendment, and that's quite obvious. And if Mr. Bernstein wants to have a conversation with Mr. McNally, we can call him. If the chairman wants to have a conversation, we can call him. But I think everybody up there knows that Mr. McNally consents to this amendment.
I'm going to just say, and I'm only one up here, but the way I look at it is, yeah, Mr. McNally is going to have to submit something that's real.
Absolutely.
Because this is not, because I work in regulated industry, and I know there's probably a few others here too. I mean, you can make this on a Word document.
Well...
I mean, that's problematic. I'm a little disappointed to see that this came in. At least, there should have been acknowledgement, scan it, take a photo, and, you know, or he could have signed it and sent the photo with his signature on it.
Well, we can authenticate the document. And, and we were made aware of this issue. So first of all, anytime an application proceeds, you don't keep filing new applications, okay? I've never done that before this board. The owner consents to this application, we can prove it, Mr. Reddington can testify as to his conversations.
Well, one of the things too, I'm just going to kind of get there, if, because I'm going to, you know, ask my fellow board members their thoughts on this, but I think until we actually do get something from Mr. McNally, I mean, Mr. Reddington is not going to be able to testify as the applicant if he wants to testify as a planner, I believe, was his credentials.
He's an engineer.
Or an engineer, he may do that, but I'm not going to, I would, I'm going to recommend to my fellow board that, I mean, we're not going to allow Mr. Reddington to testify as an applicant right now until we have some legal documents in place, you know, at this point, because I got to make sure that everything proceeds, you know...
Can we have five minutes, Chairman? So, we don't know, for example, the terms of the agreement. Is it a lease? Is it a, is it a buyout purchase 10 years from now? Is it, is, and you can say everything you want, but until it's in writing.
Mr. Assistant, I'm going to adjourn.
Right, okay? So, we, right now, we have a guy, Mr. Reddington, the applicant, that's going to put a building on that he's built...
Alleged, right now, because we don't have that.
On a land he doesn't own, we don't know what the terms of the conditions are of moving forward for both us, the township, the neighbors, et cetera, right? So, in my opinion, if you knew this was the plan, and you've been in front of this planning boards, not just in Hillsborough, in multiple towns, that should have been something that you would have had ready from the beginning because you knew we were going to ask, not just a letter saying you got permission. In fact, we had an applicant just prior, that was trying to just do a simple lot line adjustment, and we told her that we needed hard writing, that the people she was buying the land from, we needed a signed letter saying that they were going to sell her the land if she got approval. So it's not inconsistent that we've always done. No, it's a checklist item, and it's been submitted. It's a checklist item, but this is, you've changed, you've changed the direction of the ship in midstream. So...
I think Mr. Reddington has asked for a recess. I'll leave it up to you, Chairman, if you want to grant it, but that, that is, you know, where we are, looking at an application. Now, I know that this may go on a couple meetings, but that is something that we need in hard writing with, for both us and for the objector to have in detail.
Well, we, we, why don't we do this? Why don't we move to engineering? Mr. Reddington will discuss this matter with Mr. McNally, and will try to get something in writing within the next hour, so Mr. Reddington can continue with his testimony.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that Mr. Mayor's comments, I think, need to be addressed, not just a document says, "I hereby consent and sign," which is what you'll get within the hour. You need to understand exactly how this situation is being handled, because it's no longer an applicant who's buying a property, who's going to have a subdivided property. It's apparently somebody who's building a second building on somebody else's property, and I think the board and the objector and the public need to understand exactly what the terms and conditions of that agreement are.
How is it relevant?
I would like to see it.
How is it relevant? And is, and is it confidential? Do you want to know the price?
No.
Is that, is that, is that...
No, no, I want the price.
Well, in every other application, we come up here, we say, we're a contract person, purchaser, it's contingent on approvals. For warehouse applications, there's a whole new set of rules, new interpretations, new height, new order of witnesses, you can't testify.
No, I think right now, what we have is a fundamental question, who, who in legal standing is the applicant and who's the owner? We don't have that in front of us. You know, that satisfies us at this point. So that, that's what I think is at hand, that we're going to need to get to that point.
Mr. Chairman, as compared to rules or non-rules, I will indicate, for the purposes of the record, that with this change in the application, the testimony of Mr. McDonough at the last meeting has no bearing nor standing as it relates to this application, because the witnesses, the applicant apparently is no longer seeking a subdivision, which was the underlying testimony of Mr. McDonough at the last hearing. So questioning regarding that testimony as to that has no bearing on the ultimate decision of this board, because the proposed application no longer contains a subdivision. So yes, that issue is no longer an issue now. So whether we change the rules or don't change the rules, the applicant has chosen to come in and go beyond that, so for the purposes of the record, Mr. McDonough's testimony from the meeting at the February, I believe, second hearing is not applicable to any future application as to this property before this board.
As his testimony related to the subdivision.
As it relates to the subdivision. Mr. McDonough, I understand, we'll be back at a subsequent hearing relative to a standard planning testimony. That issue is a separate issue, but for the purposes of the February second testimony is no longer applicable nor viable nor binding on this board, unless the applicant goes back to another subdivision again, and then it'll be all...
You haven't had a chance to say much, so I just want to, you know, just allow your input.
I will say that earlier today, we had conversations, we raised the same standing issue, so we identified that even before we received Mr. Coys' report, so we were going to have that discussion tonight. I'm also uncomfortable with a, an email, text message that's not, you know, I'm not in a position to understand the nature of the relationship. Is it a lease? Is it a sale? What, what are the conditions? And I'm, I wasn't going to, but I feel I need to comment on this. With respect to the applicant's statement that there's undue delay in this process, I came here on November 3rd, prepared and ready to cross-examine Mr. McDonough, and counsel was advised by Mr. McDonough that he had testimony in Raritan Township before another board. Couldn't come here, if you recall, we had to adjourn because of the conflict of the unavailability of Mr. McDonough. What Mr. McDonough doesn't know is, in addition to my solo practice, I'm of counsel to Stickle Coney, where John Drill, my partner, is the attorney, and I called John, and I said, "So I understand that you had Mr. McDonough testify before you, and I have a letter that that matter was adjourned at 12 o'clock in the afternoon." So he was available, and I have written proof of it, but yet, we're standing here at 7 o'clock, and the applicant is asking for adjournment because of the unavailability of a witness who wasn't available. So when we talk about needless delay, their conduct is directly related to, and I'm happy to submit this, you can have a copy of the letter from attorney Douglas Steinhardt, who wrote to Mr. Drill on November 3rd, and I have an email showing that it came at 12 o'clock in the afternoon that the matter was adjourned. And yet, everybody was told at 7 o'clock, Mr. McDonough wasn't available because he was testifying, and it was false. So that's what I have to say about delays.
That's fine. Okay. I want to get to the matter at hand here. I think the situation we have is, you know, we, we don't have legal documents with regards to who's the applicant, who's the owner, along those lines, so we're not going to be able to hear any of that, I think, until we get that settled at a future date. But I am inclined to allow engineering to go forward with the understanding that it doesn't change and it doesn't have any bearing on anything that's related to who may be the owner, who may be the applicant, and that the engineering cannot, testimony cannot change going forward once we establish who's the applicant, who's the owner. But I don't think we're going to do it tonight, because, you know, as was outlined, I think there needs to be a very basic outline as to now how this business relationship's going to work. Not looking for dollars and cents, but, you know, how this is going to work, because obviously, someone's going to be building a, you know, a structure on someone else's property, but someone else is going to be, the builder of that is going to be the one that's going to operate it, so that, those type of details are going to need to be brought forward at a future date. I don't think you're going to get something put together, because, yeah, anything that's going to get emailed, I mean, it's got to be notarized. You know, let's just, I don't want to have any details, you know, left open that could be challenged later on. But I'm just going to ask the board members, just by your shake of your head... But I'm just gonna ask the board members, just by your shake of your heads, because I know you guys like to shake your head a lot, if we're okay to go forward with at least engineering testimony, understanding it's not gonna change. Do you need a break?
No.
Okay.
I would agree that we could move on with relative items, subject to the building and the engineering.
Once we have, yep.
And certainly, we'll submit any type of certification affidavit related to very general, non-confidential, non-privileged terms, related to the contract purchase and the ultimate sharing of the property, should the application be approved.
Well, is there a purchase? I thought we're not subdividing, or is he buying into part?
Yeah, we're not, no longer the subdivision. Two buildings on one lot, which is permitted by the ordinance and the.
I would just have your, your client, or you, submit it to Mr. Bernstein for review first, and then dissuade between the two attorneys, and then after they agree on what has been presented, then they will present to us.
And we'll circulate it to Mr., I'll circulate it to Mr. Torriello, who has standing to review.
Yes.
He can have his own questions, doesn't mean that we will agree with it.
Okay.
I'd like to call Josh Tyner, as our professional engineer.
And Josh, I'll swear in before you go. If you raise your right hand, do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Director, can you state, explain your name, please?
Joshua Tyner, J.O.S.H.U.A.T.I.N.E.R.
Thank you.
Just for the record, all my qualifications are still intact from the last time I was sworn in.
Okay, and no gaps in those certifications, licenses, or anything?
Still in good standing.
Okay, so you've been good since.
Yep. All right, so we were here before, I sort of just think I should just start from the beginning.
Probably a good idea.
So this is State Road 206, this is an exhibit, it's actually an update of the prior exhibit, so we would mark this as what, do we know?
What's the date on the revision?
This new revision is gonna be called R1, Aerial Exhibit.
Just to reiterate.
It becomes A4, it's Aerial Exhibit with a date of 3/9/23, that's today's date, and this is A4.
And this replaces?
There was a prior Aerial Exhibit that just had a little less detail. I don't necessarily have a problem leaving it.
For the purpose of the record, Mr. Tyner, the applicant, the proposed application is relying on this application, this exhibit now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, so this, this Aerial Exhibit is basically representative of existing conditions in and around the property, in red is the property lot in question, which is Lot 12 of Block 200 dot 2.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we didn't get to review these. When did these get provided to the public? I'm sorry to call out, but when did we get it?
Okay, I got it, just hold on. Mr. Coyce, do you wanna state, have these, when did you receive the engineering documents?
These are just for, this is a hearing exhibit.
Okay, so I don't believe this, and the applicant can indicate to us, but I don't believe we had received this, correct?
Right.
Right. So he's presenting it as an exhibit, being presented now, do you have a hard copy of it as well, for us to mark it?
Actually, I do have 11 by 17 copies, if you guys would like me to hand them out.
That's basically where we're at.
Okay.
They're in the options.
Before we get calling from the audience, let me try to, Mr. O'Grady, you'll, Mr. Tyner available at the next hearing for questions from the public as to his testimony, which was not on Civic Clerk?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Would you see him? Want you a couple of photos?
I'll make them available later. Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, there's several ones that will be about one.
Do we wanna do it as a different number?
Killer trees, man.
And we're gonna want every one, I want every page marked separately, which is what we normally do. It's good for you. Anymore? I am going, I'll entirely agree to give you mine along with the two, so that you can, uh, couple them out there.
No, now, when we put on record.
Mr. Coyce will provide me with a copy at some point. No, I gave, I gave mine to the, to the public.
All right, do you wanna use this one?
No, you can use it.
I could look up there.
No, I can too, I'm fine, my eyesight is fading, but not that quickly.
Not quite dead yet.
No, these are cheaters, that's about what they are.
Mark it as we go. So A4, let me do this, yeah, A4.
This is A4, we've indicated the situation, to date, we've addressed the issue of the return of a witness for future examination by members of the public and/or the objector, based upon any exhibit, which will be placed before this board tonight, which has not previously been placed before the board through Civic Clerk. And with that, Mr. O'Grady.
Thank you. So I will be able to zoom in and out for the purposes of this presentation, but just so that people can see, I've zoomed in a little bit, the red outlined property is the property in question, right? So Route 206, which is labeled here as State Road, runs north and south. Approximately 700 feet to the east on Homestead Road is where the property fronts on Homestead Road. There's three access points into the property, 1, 2, and 3, in order. And just for the purpose of this exhibit, I've identified a few things that might be of interest. This shaded area over here adjacent to the two residential use lots, Lot 14 and 15, which are adjacent to the west, and just the location of where the proposed building is going to be on the property after the development. It's the building outline only, so it's existing conditions with a building outline only also shown. So referring to this exhibit, as I noted, 700 feet, and with the exception of Lots 14 and 15, which reportedly contain the residential use, all of the surrounding properties are more industrial in nature. Project site, Lot 12 is in the LI light industrial zone, as was explained earlier. The adjacent lots on Business 206 are in the GB zone, general business. Existing conditions, Lot 12 is 17.12 acres, contains an existing 69,339 square foot industrial building. The building contains approximately 10,000 square feet of office as an accessory within the building. The site contains circulation features, parking, a loading area, site lighting, and some limited landscaping features. The parking analysis as submitted yields the existing need for 45 parking spaces, and there are 50 existing parking spaces. Moving on to the proposed, I will open another exhibit, which will mark as A5. A5 is a document, it would probably be the second one in the stack. It's labeled as R2, Rendering 2, Exhibit Rendering, dated 3/9/23. What this is, is a colorized rendering site plan of the proposed conditions, which show various colors to represent various aspects of what's existing and proposed on the property. The application proposes to further develop existing Lot 12 with a second principal building as permitted by ordinance. Project maintains the existing circulation features, such as the parking, loading areas, and landscaping, lighting in and around the existing building, and proposes new features around the new industrial building. The new industrial building's proposed footprint is 132,750 square feet. That consists of 128,560 square feet of open space, 4,190 square feet of office space. The bulk requirements are as follows. Minimum lot area, 2 acres required, the property complies with approximately 17.12 acres. Minimum lot width, 200 feet are required, property complies with 374 existing and proposed. Minimum lot depth, 250 feet is required, property complies 1,573 feet, existing and proposed. The minimum front yard setback, 40 feet is required, the property complies with 118.4 feet, existing and proposed. The minimum side yard setback of 20 feet, the property complies with 23.9 existing. It's worth noting, the proposed new building will maintain a 40-foot setback on the side yard to the, to the, to the west, I mean, to the east. The minimum rear yard setback, 75 feet is required, the property will continue to comply with 413.6 feet proposed. The maximum floor area ratio, .3 is required, the property will comply with .271 proposed. Maximum impervious coverage of 60% max is the limitation, the property will comply with 54.7% proposed. Maximum building height of three stories is permitted, and 60 feet. The property will comply with the existing one-story building at 22.4 feet, and the proposed one-story building at approximately 53 feet, proposed under the new height determination, which was previously 49 feet. Meaning, we've just added four feet to what we previously proposed at 49, because the loading dock with an extra four feet plays into the interpretation of the building height. Minimum buffer to the non-residential uses, 20 feet is required. As was mentioned earlier, the project requires relief due to the existing non-conforming 16.3 feet proposed, and that is over here, adjacent to the existing building. There's about 16.3 feet just between the edge of the property line and the existing drive aisle. The minimum buffer to residential zone or uses, 60 feet is required. The project complies where the adjacent lots 14 and 15 are. 60 is required, and 84.9 feet is proposed. That dimension would be here, between the pavement and the property line here, of 84.9 feet. Parking, the total required parking for the post-constructed site is 84 parking spaces. Site plans reflect 50 existing parking spaces plus 39 proposed parking spaces, totaling 89 proposed parking spaces. This includes 11 banked spaces of the proposed, or 28 non-banked, that yields a compliant condition. And again, 39 are shown in and around the proposed building, since that's the contributing amount needed for that building. Both sides will comply with the EV or electrical vehicle requirements that New Jersey put into effect in July of 2021. 9 by 18-foot parking spaces are existing on the existing portions of the property, and that's also what we've proposed around the new building. 10 by 20 foot is the standard in Hillsborough. 24-foot drive aisle width adjacent to the parking is proposed, which is common industry standard. 30-foot aisle is really the standard in Hillsborough, but we're proposing 24 feet. And the proposed layout is designed to meet ADA requirements. Other interesting features to note, the drainage design complies with the New Jersey Stormwater Regulations. There's four parameters in stormwater that are the main parameters when something's triggered as a major storm, a major development in terms of stormwater. That's water quality, water quantity, groundwater recharge, and green infrastructure. In fact, the applicant has received a staff report with no further technical comments from the Delaware River Canal Commission. However, they don't issue a final approval until they receive the municipal approval, so they've gone through a pretty rigorous stormwater review, and have approved the plan from a technical perspective. At the Environmental Commission on 7/25, there was a request to add a basin, which was in part of a tree area, we had done some tree mitigation, and this area here was full of proposed trees. And the Environmental Commission asked us to explore doing some above and beyond water quality treatment, to just pick up anything that we could of this existing pavement, which would be then able to be provided water quality through a new feature. We explored the option of that, the possibility of it, and when it was feasible, I spoke with the applicant and the property owner, and they were both agreeable to this. And at the time, we were nervous that we wouldn't be able to plant enough trees, so the Environmental Commission, in fact, had stated that they would prefer this water quality treatment as opposed to meeting the tree mitigation ordinance, but we've then been able to find additional places to plant trees, so we were able to comply with both the tree mitigation and that water quality request. And in fact, the way we sized this feature, it isn't just providing the water quality, but it will, there will be some water quantity benefits to it, which will also help theoretical downstream flooding into the Royceboro. I'm not gonna get into the reduction factors of that, but we are well under the required reduction factors for stormwater. In terms of signs, there's a proposed building mounted sign on the new building, proposed here, which is a 40-square-foot sign, it's compliant. There's a proposed freestanding ground monument-type sign, which is compliant. The new ground mounted sign is to be located here. It is 6 foot, 6 inches high and 39 square foot proposed, located approximately 15 feet from the curb, where a 10-foot setback is required. What was changed in a recent resubmission of the application was just removal of the existing sign and placement of this one sign with details to reflect that two different building occupants could be on this property. But it is one single sign structure, so it's compliant. Lighting in and around the existing building is to remain as is. The expansion area proposes new lighting. Any previously submitted waiver requests anticipated have been removed in the redesign, as the lighting is now compliant. Landscaping, the applicant has proposed significant trees in order to comply with the tree mitigation ordinance. And as I noted, some trees were removed in this basin area, but we still are able to be compliant. And so this plan has, as you can see, trees, trees along the back, trees, a lot of trees over here, adjacent to the residential, especially where we did the 60-foot buffer and increased that with rows of trees. We have details showing that we comply with the shrub requirements under the trees inside that 60-foot residential adjacent buffer. In terms of refuse refusal, our removal and recycling, refuse removal and recycling will occur via private hauler. We utilize the proposed trash enclosure, which has now been relocated to the rear. Prior, we had the trash enclosure shown over here, near that front corner of the building, and now it's back here behind the building, so that's where it's been located now. Utilities for water, electric, gas, and sanitary sewer are available and able to service the site with the services as proposed. So, in summary, in terms of variances and waiver relief, we count five proposed variances. Again, they were touched on earlier, but I'll just mention them again. From 188-107.1.e1, the 20-foot non-residential buffer width is supposed to be 20 feet. This existing situation here is 16.3 feet, and the buffer is gonna remain as is opposite the existing loading area. The, from 188-107.1g2c1, the maximum, a maximum of one curb cut for frontage less than 500 feet is the limitation, and as you can see, there are three existing curb cuts for access into this property. And that is an existing non-conforming condition to remain. And that is an existing non-conforming condition to remain. 188-107.1g5b, parking shall be located in side or rear yards and not in front of buildings. Again, this existing parking area is in front of the existing building, so this is an existing non-conforming condition that will remain. From 188-107.1h1, the requirements of the architectural site design overlay zone as contained in 188-167 to 188-175L shall apply. And so since we've noted that relief is required from two waivers from Section 188-75, we believe that variance relief is required for this item. Both of those waivers, which we'll get to in a moment though, are very minor and will be discussed in the waiver testimony. From 188-107.1h7, this item is the architectural requirements of the proposed billing as noted in Mr. Coys's memo. Now, while our plans didn't reflect this relief, and we had a conversation with Mr. Coys about it earlier today, we do believe that our intent was to comply with this requirement, and that it is something that we can comply with as a condition of approval. We would make some minor architectural modifications, work with Mr. Coys's office. It was his first look at what we had proposed in our attempts to comply with the requirements, and we believe that the building is able to comply with those requirements. So I don't think ultimately that this relief will be required, but the plans you see before you now might, under his interpretation, require that relief. Design waivers. We have seven design waivers total. From 188-68b, loading spaces shall not have direct access from major interior drives. So there are two areas of existing loading on the existing building that's over here and over here. And, you know, the way the ordinance is written, it basically says you should not have direct access from a major interior drive. I don't necessarily believe that this is a major interior drive. It is, in fact, an interior drive, but major in my mind would be something such as like the driveway around a mall, the road around a mall that, you know, a lot of vehicles are going on, a major interior drive. So this may not technically be something that requires relief, but it came up in Mr. Melick's memo, and so I decided the best course is to bring it to the attention of the board if you believe that relief is required due to this item. It's an existing non-conforming condition because that interior drive was there before and the vehicles went into it, but that is at the board's discretion. Loading and a complete planer will be able to easily justify that too, and traffic can testify as well. Loading areas shall have a 30-foot wide buffer from property lines. Again, this is an existing non-conforming condition because the existing loading areas here include both the loading spaces and the apron and loading circulation area, so that is 16.3 feet from the property line and not 30 feet of a buffer from the property line. So that requires relief. Parking aisle widths of 30 feet are required, and again, industry standard to do 24-foot drive aisles. I think many projects follow that industry standard term. 30 feet in my mind is maybe applicable to a place with heavy car traffic and shopping centers, but relief is required nonetheless. Off-street park or parking stall size, again, also nine-by-18 are provided, proposed in both the proposed and the existing. 10-foot by 20-foot parking spaces are the standard here, and again, relief is requested. Off-street loading space dimensions. For loading spaces, this is from 188-68.e2. Off-street loading space dimensions. For loading spaces that are 12 by 24, as defined in the ordinance, a combined apron and aisle width of 63 feet is required. We may have said that 62 feet was provided. That's about to here, the 62 feet at that minimum point. Maybe it's 60 feet that's proposed, but this is again, loading spaces here, and 63 feet is not exactly provided, so existing non-conforming condition, relief is required. Parking is required to be located to the rear, or this is from per 188-175.a.1, which is one of the overlay zone requirements that triggers that variance relief mentioned earlier. And again, this is that parking is required to be located in the side or rear of the building. This is an unchanging existing non-conforming condition here in front of the existing building. And the last item of design waiver relief is 188-175.g5, where metal halide lights are required. And again, as was noted earlier, LED lights are provided, which I believe would be the preference of like the Environmental Commission, but we could comply with this item if that is the preference of the board. So then speaking to review letters that we've received, we received David Coys's planning memo dated 3/9/2023. We also had a conversation with David regarding the applications related to that letter. I do not believe that there are any technical engineering-type changes identified. And so that's it in terms of that from an engineering perspective. We reviewed a fire marshal memo from Chris Weniger dated 10/31/22, or 2022. We note that we will be able to comply with all the requirements of that latest memo. We received a Panoni engineering memo dated 3/6/2022. We've had conversations with Todd Hay and other members of his office with respect to this. We will generally comply with all their comments, noting the following. All general comments have been satisfied. All lighting and landscaping comments have been satisfied. The three stormwater management comments, six, seven, and eight, will easily be able to be complied with as a condition of approval. Traffic comments will be testified to by the traffic consultant. Testimony was requested with respect to environmental impact statement number three and the geotechnical testing on the site, or at least the geology of the site. And so I'm just going to speak a little bit about the geotechnical testing that took place. There was significant geotechnical testing performed at this site. The New Jersey Stormwater Regulations require very detailed geotechnical testing and testing for bearing capacity. It was also completed for the building design to be completed by the architect, but below is a brief summary of how thorough this testing was. In a report dated 11/4/2021, the results of Whitestone's limited study found relatively shallow bedrock and conditions that made standard infiltration testing challenging. So a preliminary design for this property actually proposed to bring four feet of fill onto the site and to design the basins with underdrains. As a result of this, we pursued basin flood testing, which is a method of testing basically the rock to see that if it's fractured and will water infiltrate through the rocks that we can do infiltration of groundwater and not be required to put in underdrains, which is required when you don't have an ability to infiltrate. The testing proved fractured rock to exist based on a criteria of half an inch infiltration rate, since the observation is required at a 24-hour interval. On 5/31/21, an amendment was provided due to the DRCC discussion regarding a discrepancy in the basin flood testing criteria and the minimal fill rate that is allowed in the BMP manual. So DRCC then accepted the revised data that we provided, which suggested an infiltration rate of two inches per hour, regardless of the design rate for the BMP, which must be at least half an inch per hour. So this was functional, and DRCC accepted this amended data that came in from Whitestone. Although DRCC accepted the data at the Environmental Commission meeting, additional data was requested. So Whitestone was re-engaged to obtain supplemental basin flood testing data. The data continued to show fractured rock, consistent with rates that would allow for stormwater BMP, which has a design rate of the half inch per hour minimum, which is consistent with the design. So that history and that correspondence with DEP on getting this was shared with Mr. Hay at one point, and we've had discussions regarding the appropriateness of utilizing this minimal permitted design rate. And it's worth noting, we have also used the infiltration rate really only for the purpose of showing compliance with the annual groundwater recharge requirement, which provides a more conservative approach to, say, the quantity calculations. For example, on some BMP features, you could propose infiltration in the routing of it, which would lose some of it, and you'd be saying less water's going downstream. We didn't assume that infiltration for that purpose. We only assumed the infiltration for the purpose of compliance with the annual groundwater recharge deficit. So this site is fully compliant with stormwater. We did a significant amount of geotechnical testing. We believe we were transparent every step of the way and tried to incorporate and provide all the data that was requested of us by any of the professionals. With respect to environmental impact statement number seven, about potential adverse impacts to the scenic historic features, the site, more specifically the area of proposed disturbance, has no known historical features. The work is generally set back from surrounding roads, none of which are understood to be scenic routes. Therefore, the project doesn't impact scenic or historic features. Testimony requested with respect to environmental impact statement number eight. As noted in the report, there are not any anticipated adverse effects to critical impact areas. Protective measures such as stormwater mitigation features, soil erosion and sediment control features such as silt fence will minimize, or maybe could have otherwise been the case. It's also worth noting that we will comply with any schedule restrictions to the work such as protected bat habitats, et cetera, if identified by the still pending NJDEP white lens permit and transition area waiver application that's still under review. Testimony was requested with respect to environmental impact statement number 10. Construction equipment will comply with all applicable noise control standards. That's my opinion, and I believe it will. Data was requested with respect to environmental impact statement number 11. Speaking with Panoni's office, this will consist of providing their office with copies of the will serve letters which have been received and data such as sewer and water reports, which will be provided to HTMUA and SRVSA and New Jersey American Water associated with those applications for those utilities. All that will be turned over, and then, as I sort of testified too early regarding solid waste disposal, as noted earlier, a private hauler will be engaged for the new building's solid waste, likely one to two times a week, utilizing the trash enclosure area and maybe a loading dock bay for a compactor or something like that. Regarding miscellaneous number one, meets and bounds subscriptions associated with the subdivision are no longer applicable. Testimony with respect to miscellaneous number two, this is understood to be a spec building without a tenant, so the number of employees and hours of operation are going to be in accordance with any ordinance restrictions. And then, at the appropriate time, owners may testify with respect to this topic as And we will comply with miscellaneous items number three through nine, all of which are outside agency permits, which will be provided, plus an opinion of applicable cost or a cost estimate for both public and private property work, which will be provided to township as a condition of approval. And then additional comment number one, we will be able to satisfy that comment. And I think that pretty much completes my testimony in terms of the review letters and available for questions.
Do you need to add anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, at this time, I believe that all the items that have been satisfied, the only thing I would ask the applicant to do is to provide a point-by-point response letter if this application would be approved, all of other compliance items that may be set by the board as well as the board's professionals. I would ask also that because I don't believe that the traffic would be addressed to seething, and if it's not to be addressed to seething, that the traffic engineer be prepared to address the items that we brought forth in this letter, because all those items are outstanding, and it would be good that they be addressed. Big questions about the type of use that is found in the Institute of Transportation Engineers manual concerning trip generation. That needs to be addressed, I think, before the applicant comes back with their traffic engineer, so that we can dissect it and understand what the impacts may be to the local roadway network. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. They will allow you to cross-examine or?
Is it possible to take a two-minute necessary break?
We'll make it five for being generous tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I don't have to run then.
Okay. Thank you. We'll be back at 8:35. Okay, we're back in session. Floor is yours.
Mr. Tyner, some of my questions have to do with, in reference to your report dated February 15th and revised on October 19th, relative to a drainage area two. And I'm just wondering if you can get that in front of you. I think you would agree with me that the exhibits that you have up there, I guess the second one, the one that we're looking at now, that
I believe that's eight-five?
Yeah, eight-five. That this area, which is actually, I don't know if you could move it over, would be, if I was referencing existing drainage area two, that that would be all of this, right?
Can we get that on the screen, please?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the easiest way for the record if we're, I mean, we could use this. The brown area and the gray area in the back would be drainage area two. Is that fair to say? Or do we need to actually utilize that reference?
I need to.
I'm comfortable either way. I just want to make sure we're on the same page when I ask my questions. Sure, take your time. My planner says if he's hooked up, he could put it up on the screen if you can't.
Yeah, I don't have an electronic exhibit, but.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we put that up there and then it'll be clearer in terms of the testimony?
Who's going to be IT today?
Mr. O'Grady. Thank you, Michael.
How many years of law school for that?
I think that's it. Yeah.
Michael, do we have any exhibits marked for the ejector?
O1.
O1, thank you. All right, so we're going to mark this O2. Mr. Torriello, for purpose of the record, could you indicate what O2 is?
O2 is a drainage area map that was prepared by Mr. Tyner, I believe, right?
Our office prepared this.
Yeah, and it's in Civic Clerk. That's where we got this.
This is part of the drainage report. Right.
So, Mr. Tyner, with respect to O2, is it fair to say that the runoff, as it currently exists on this property, travels across the property in a northerly direction?
Yeah, I would say northwest early and/or northerly.
Okay.
North by northwest.
And with respect to the current conditions in this drainage area two, there's no swales on the property in its current state, correct? on the property in its current state, correct?
What I'm seeing on these plans, there's, I wouldn't call them swales, but there's undulations which can tend to maybe appear to be a swell.
Okay, but no swales in drainage area two?
Doesn't appear to be.
Okay. And no ditches in drainage area two either, is that correct?
I don't see any ditches.
Can I talk up, Mr. Tyner?
I don't see any ditches on this plan.
I just thought he was assuming me. I'm pulling the mic closer. And the topography in drainage area two, is it fair to say is flat, correct?
I wouldn't say flat. I'd say it gently slopes.
In a northerly direction?
Yep, depending on where you're standing, more of a northwesterly direction.
Okay. And in that area, there's no berms or depressions, fair to say?
I don't see any obvious berms or depressions.
Okay. Are you familiar with my client, Mr. Ianel's property? He's one of the residential properties that abuts the-
Oh, yes. Lot 15 and 14?
Right, correct.
Yes.
Those properties also drain to the north?
Yeah, they probably do drain to the north.
Can you please explain to the board what time of concentration means?
When rainfall lands on property, several areas could be considered, they're called watersheds, where all of the water that lands in that area, they concentrate to. And the time of concentration is the longest period of time that the highest rain drop will come, that when that one would hit, apparently they point of analysis and all of it will concentrate. So that's considered the time of concentration. It's calculated through engineering methods and we have a line that shows a time of concentration.
And what's the time of concentration you use to calculate the runoff from the existing drainage area?
I don't have that information handy.
Okay. Is that in your report somewhere?
Yes.
Do you know where it is in your report?
I don't have it handy.
Okay. With respect to the proposed conditions, can you please explain, what's the purpose of the larger wall that's being constructed along the conservation easement?
Okay. Proposed conditions, you'll probably discuss a flow. I don't have the access to it anymore, but-
Can I talk up, Mr. Tyner?
So you're looking at the, to the north, I think, retaining wall that's proposed? Yep. Yeah, so the purpose of that retaining wall is there because the proposed grades in and around the building and the fire lane are proposed to be at a higher elevation than the existing grades adjacent to the conservation easement.
What's the distance between the wall and a conservation easement?
I'm needing a moment, I've got a plan. Three feet.
Three feet? Can you tell me how tall the wall is? Say near the corner by the warehouse?
Approximately 8.4 feet.
Okay, thank you. How much is the ground being raised at the northerly corner of the warehouse? Have you calculated the amount of fill that'll be needed under the loading area and behind the retaining wall?
I believe we've done earthwork analysis on this site, yes, but maybe not as nuanced to the specific location you're asking in terms of a quantity.
So you can't advise at this time?
No, I can't tell you the amount of fill that's proposed in that area. If I had a square footage of the area in question that you're speaking of, I could probably come up with a rough estimate. But if it was like one square inch, then it would be the, you know, amount of that area.
Is it fair to say that under the proposed conditions with the warehouse roof and loading area, that the water will flow in a westerly direction?
Water captured by the roof of this structure is going to be placed in pipes that flow in a westerly direction to the stormwater management features.
Fair to say warehouse roof and loading area are impervious?
Yes.
Is it fair to say that all the proposed impervious cover is being directed to the large-scale bio-retention basin located next to my client's property?
Significant percentage of it is going to that stormwater management feature ultimately, after going through either small-scale retention for surface drivable areas or the roof does go directly to it, yes.
Can you explain to me how this basin functions?
So the large-scale bio-retention basin is a stormwater management, it's a green infrastructure feature when used the way that it's proposed in conjunction with small-scale bio-retentions that go into it and basically water is directed into, stormwater is directed into the feature. There's what's called an outlet control structure at one end of the feature and what that constructed element is there to do is to allow water to come out at a slower rate than would otherwise leave the site. So basically, this is a, the basin itself holds water temporarily while the water then comes out of the outlet control structure to the point of analysis downstream and ultimately then at the end, the small amount of what's called the water quality storm then infiltrates into the ground. And the feature itself is designed in accordance with the New Jersey BMP manual, which is Best Management Practices manual, which requires various forms of landscaping materials to be installed within it and certain soil properties within the strata of the subsurface of it to be conducive to the growth of that type of landscaping and the percolation or infiltration of water through it.
So basin 15 is designed to infiltrate stormwater, correct?
It allows for the infiltration of stormwater because of the fact that the subsurface rock strata will allow for infiltration and no underdrains are proposed, but in terms of the analysis of routing stormwater, infiltration is not taken into account.
Was soil testing performed to determine if the subsurface soils are capable of infiltrating the required volume of runoff?
Yes, as I testified earlier, there was a test that was performed called the basin flood test. It wasn't just one, we did them throughout the site. The BMP manual requires that a certain number of these tests be proposed within each BMP feature and those tests took place and were proposed within the features.
Have you calculated the increase in the volume of water that will be infiltrated between the current condition and the proposed condition?
Trying to think of what you're asking. Do I have, I have a, there's a reduction in the quantity of stormwater of about 6,000 cubic feet and thereby that 6,000 cubic feet would be the amount of water anticipated to infiltrate. That's on a large storm. So there's also annual recharge calculation which is, has been proven to comply with the requirements, but there's no ultimate calculation that identifies how much infiltration of stormwater will ultimately go into the ground throughout the whole course of time.
Nor the direction that it will flow, correct?
Well, if it infiltrates, it will flow down toward the center of the earth.
With respect to the existing conservation easement, is it true that a portion of the wetland that was delineated for this project-
Call it, Mr. Mike.
I'm sorry. With respect to the existing conservation easement, is it true that a portion of the wetland that was delineated for this project extends beyond the limit of the conservation easement?
Yes.
Are you aware that Hillsborough Township has requirements to permanently preserve critical features such as wetlands?
Not fully familiar with that requirement.
Okay. Why are you not showing a new conservation easement to preserve the wetlands and the transition area?
The history of the existing conservation easement was a part of the title of the project and a part of the new project. We only need to get a permit for modification of wetlands as they've evolved over time. The existing wetlands, from the time of the conservation easement, no longer exist in that format. They migrated as it were, I suppose, as the environmental specialist would be the one to explain more accurately, but he identified where they are and so now that the wetlands, the new wetlands that exist, new location of the existing wetlands outside of the conservation easement are outside of the conservation easement, we've applied for permits to modify those new locations. I don't know if that answered the question exactly, but-
With respect to the retaining wall, is it true that a portion of the wall is being constructed in the transition area of the onsite wetlands?
Yes.
Is it true that you're proposing a wetland reduction area and compensation area to address the encroachment into this transition area?
Yes, we've proposed a compensation area.
And that the compensation area you're proposing is located in the existing conservation easement?
Yes, that's true.
That's an area that's already preserved, correct?
It's a conservation easement that doesn't currently have wetlands features within it.
And as I asked, it's already preserved, correct?
Well, I mean, I just believe that it's, I don't know if it's preserved from being able to be a compensation area. It's certainly an area that if DEP would permit, then it would be an appropriate compensation area. If DEP wouldn't permit it under the permit, then we would have to relocate that. This is, I believe, jurisdiction of the DEP.
The outflow pipe from the large-scale bio-retention basin 15 is 30 inches in diameter, is that correct?
Yes.
And a portion of the riprap apron at the discharge point of this 30-inch outflow pipe is located in the existing conservation easement, fair to say?
I don't think it is. I think we intentionally kept the riprap outside of the conservation easement. That was the goal, the intent. The lines on the plans that I have in front of me don't really reflect one way or the other.
Is it true that the conservation easement is not labeled on the wetlands area plan that was submitted to New Jersey DEP for approval of the compensation area?
I don't have that document in front of me.
So as you sit here today, you have nothing in front of you that would-
With respect to the retaining wall, is it true that a portion of the wall is being constructed in the transition area of the onsite wetlands?
Yes.
Is it true that you're proposing a wetland reduction area and compensation area to address the encroachment into this transition area?
Yes, we've proposed a compensation area.
And that the compensation area you're proposing is located in the existing conservation easement? That's an area that's already preserved, correct?
It's a conservation easement that doesn't currently have wetlands features within it.
As I asked, it's already preserved, correct?
Well, I mean, I just believe that it's, I don't know if it's preserved from being able to be a compensation area. It's certainly an area that if DEP would permit, then it would be an appropriate compensation area. If DEP wouldn't permit it under the permit, then we would have to relocate that. This is, I believe, jurisdiction of the DEP.
The outflow pipe from the large-scale bioretention basin 15 is 30 inches in diameter. Is that correct? And a portion of the riprap apron at the discharge point at this 30-inch outflow pipe is located in the existing conservation easement, is that correct?
I don't think it is. I think we intentionally kept the riprap outside of the conservation easement. That was the goal, the intent. The lines on the plans that I have in front of me don't really reflect one way or the other.
Is it true that the conservation easement is not labeled on the wetlands area plan that was submitted to New Jersey DEP for approval of the compensation area?
I don't have that document in front of me.
So as you sit here today, you have nothing in front of you that would refute that statement, correct?
No. What? Oh, here's-- Oh, no, my answer was no.
No, it's not. It's not labeled on the area that was submitted to NJDEP.
No, I have nothing to refute that. That's all I said. It might be.
With respect to the 30-inch outflow pipe from Basin 15, is it true that the receiving channel for the flow from the outflow pipe is located 95 feet from the end of the riprap head?
I'm not, I'm not certain of that from looking at these plans.
Is it true that the receiving channel and the area between the channel and the outflow pipe are all located in the conservation easement?
It's true that the point of analysis, which is beyond our limit of disturbance, is in the conservation area.
And should perform stabilization calculations for any portion in the conservation easement downstream of the discharge pipe?
No, I believe we did, yeah. That was requirement of the Soil Conservation District.
Mr. Tyner, I have in front of me your report of September 12th--
Mike--
I have in front of me your report of September 12th, 2022. You have that in front of you, sir?
September 12th, 2022. A letter?
Yes.
I don't have it in front of me.
Can you get it in front of you? Do you have a copy?
I don't have--
Do you have a copy of his report? No, I don't have a copy of his report.
I don't have a copy with me.
I'm familiar with this.
Sorry, which report are we--
September, September 12th, 2022.
And is there a title?
It's a response letter to--
Is it to the--
Mr. Hay.
Okay.
Response to Environmental Commission 830-2022 memo. Is the R8.
Marking this as an exhibit, Mr. Torriello?
Is already in the record, isn't it? But it was submitted on, but I'm happy to do that.
Why don't we mark it?
Sure. I guess that's O3.
This will be O3. Mr. Lombardoz, you have the title for that, based on Mr. Torriello's representation. Thank you.
Earlier, you testified to this board about this, quote, "significant geotechnical testing" and, quote, "the transparency at every step of the way." You recall using those words in your testimony before this board?
I used words that were similar to that.
You used those exact words, correct?
Could be.
I'd ask you to look at bullet point 12.
Okay.
The Environmental Commission stated in their report, in the revised SWM report, nine pages of infiltration data are provided, last nine pages of the report. The problem is, for each test pit, the results are identical. The times are identical. So it implies that they had nine employees simultaneously observing each test pit. All nine test pits infiltrated six inches of water in six hours, which is a rate of flow of one inch per hour. But in the report calculated, this is to be two inches an hour, per n. So the calculation appears to be incorrect, close per n. As such, we surmise that these data are manufactured and not based on real observations. Therefore, we recommend that all information provided by Whitestone for this project be rejected and an independent expert that is approved by the township be retained to conduct any future tests at this site. Did I read that correctly?
Yep.
And your response is listed below, correct?
Yes.
And in essence, you state, "challenges to Whitestone ethics are without merit." You say that, right?
I do say that, yeah.
But you don't indicate the names of nine individuals who would have simultaneously provided the testing to quell the concerns of the Environmental Commission, do you?
Well, my opinion is, in a case like this, and this is just what's been reported to me from Whitestone, which are, again, trusted, reputable, geotechnical firm, that, as an example, sometimes when the people are doing the logs, they just put down one time and then they walk around and do all the stuff. And they replicate that timestamp on every report or every log that they do. And it's not a case of having stood simultaneously or there was no nefarious intent to have just identified when they kind of started the work and then walked around and did all of it, because they did it all within that same time period. But I can't testify on behalf of Whitestone. I'd just say my opinion is that they put their licenses on the line and questioning their ethics over something of that nature, which is pretty common, I think, in the industry, is without merit.
Okay. Again, so your testimony before this board, "without merit," means to ignore the fact that there were nine test pits that were simultaneously done that had simultaneous and exact results?
Yes. I believe it's without--
And your opinion is offered to this board without independently speaking to the nine individuals or the individuals who conducted the study? You have no personal knowledge of that fact, correct?
There's not nine individuals.
But you don't know how many there were, do you? You don't know the names of the individuals, do you?
No, I don't.
I have no further questions.
Open up to the board members. Neil, I know you've got a laundry list.
Okay. So Mr. Torriello covered some of the items that I was going to talk about, but I do want to try to reconstruct and organize the back and forth between the Environmental Commission, Mr. Torriello, and some of the reports that we have, because it does go over a length of time and it's hard, sometimes it's hard to keep straight here, so just bear with me. So, yeah, the Environmental Commission issued a letter or view letter on 830-22. The report that Mr. Torriello was just reading was a response to that. With that being said, there was, I guess, an updated stormwater evaluation on September 1st, 2022. What I wanted to do is, I wanted to read some recent observations to, because the Environmental Commission rewrote a letter on November 3rd, 2022, in response to the September 12th, 2022 letter that Mr. Torriello just read. So this is from Chairman Foley. I don't see the applicant's response to the last EC memo dated 11/3/2022. Please let me know where the response memo is located so we can make sure the EC concerns have been addressed. If there are no response memo from the applicant addressing the EC's memo dated 11/3/22, then the EC cannot recommend approval of the applicant's stormwater management report and plans as serious concerns regarding their data remain unresolved. The original EC memo dated 8/30/22 requested that the applicant include no idling signs. The applicant agreed they would include these signs in their response memo dated 9/12, response number seven. However, the latest plans do not show any no idling signs proposed as part of this project. This remains unresolved. The applicant's response memo dated 9/12/22 to the EC's memo dated 8/30/22 stated that the existing property owner's attorney has notified us that ISRA will not be triggered by this transaction. This is a very vague statement. The EC requests that the name and contact information for said property owner's attorney be provided, as well as a written statement from the said attorney clearly stating whether ISRA would be applicable to the proposed project. Exhibits Homestead 279 LLC state, starting 2/9/23, and continuing hearing, the land use classification shown on the land use maps are inaccurate and do not actually match the land use slash land cover designations that the NJDEP 2015 land use land cover layer actually shows. An example is that the subject parcel block 200.02, lot 12, is actually shown on the NJDEP 2015 LU slash LC layer as being a mix of forest slash wetlands and agriculture slash urban, but their slide doesn't show any LU slash LC for the subject parcel. Additionally, block 200.02, lot 12.01, on the corner adjacent to the subject parcel, is shown on the NJDEP 2015 LU slash LC layer as being forest slash wetland, but their slide shows this parcel as being commercial slash services, other urban, question mark. Also, the zoning map references NJGIN 2015 as the source, but this zoning information cannot be found on the NJGIN. These issues slash questions need to be clarified, checked, and/or slides revised to show the correct information as applicable. I know, Mr. Tyner, you said that you had additional geotechnical testing that was done on 11/4, so I would request that geotechnical testing be reviewed by the Environmental Commission. I know you're going to be coming back, so I would like the Environmental, an opportunity for the Environmental Commission to review that, that testing and have comments on that as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other members? Mr. Bernstein? Mr. Tyner, can you put up Exhibit A4, please?
Swap power.
Swap the power, thank you.
Thank you.
Up or down?
Up, please.
Is that up?
Yes, thank you. I believe it was your testimony on direct, Mr. Tyner, that the uses at lot 11, 9, 8, and 7 are all industrial uses. Is that correct?
I just said in general terms, generally speaking, industrial in nature.
Is there any indication that there's any residential use at that--
I'm not aware of any indication of any residential in any of those properties.
Pull up A5, please. The proposed building has how many loading docks?
23.
Did you design the building yourself with 23 loading docks?
Yeah, there's 23. Did I myself design the loading docks?
Did you design the building with the 23 loading docks?
Our company, the architect, designed the loading docks on the building facade or the building layout, and we designed the loading spaces adjacent to the loading dock door locations.
Was your office provided any information by the architect as to why that number and not another?
No, I defer that to the architect.
Is there a reason why the loading docks are facing the residential property to what I would call the north and not to the properties which are more industrial in nature to the south? North is at the top and south is at the bottom?
Not conducive to the circulation of this site. Oftentimes, when you have a site that slopes in the direction that it slopes, it's more appropriate to, more typical industrial, industry standard goal to face the loading docks on the low side of the sloping hill so that you're not proposing excess cut associated with putting loading docks in the hillside of a site, per se. That's just a good engineering practice, but that's not particularly the reason--
Does the land currently slope in the back of the property?
Yeah, as I testified earlier, it generally slopes from the southwest, southeast to the northwest in that direction.
I think the question from Mr. Torriello, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, was, does the water necessarily run from that piece? But I'll stay incorrected. Would you push the exhibit towards the chair for the purposes of this? Thank you. Do you know how many loading docks there are in the building in the front?
I could be wrong, but I believe there's five.
And I believe it was your testimony that the building site in question is approximately 70,000 square feet, is it not?
Approximately.
And it's your testimony that the design of the building and the configuration of the building was given to your office by the architect, is that correct?
I mean, a team of people worked together to do conceptual planning associated with the layout of the property.
I asked you a question not two minutes ago, Mr. Tyner. Whose idea was to design the building with 23 loading docks? And I believe your testimony was, it was-- was it was based on information the architect had provided to your office to draw? Which is the correct answer, the team of which you were a part of, or it was provided to you by another party to design?
The team worked on a conceptual plan. The architect provided me with the exact location of the loading dock doors on a plan that matches the 23 that are in this current version of the plans.
All right, so I'll go back to my original question again. Whose idea was the design of building with 23 loading docks?
The team.
And how did the team come to a decision to build, propose a building with 23 loading docks versus 30 loading docks versus five loading docks versus any number of loading docks?
Well, on a, on a project of this nature, there could be tenants that would want this many loading dock doors, and there could be tenants that require less, and so we show the maximum number, in this case, that we can propose with truck circulation so that you can actually get the trucks into the loading dock spaces with the circulation areas that you have available to you.
Was the team ever provided with a list of proposed tenants and their usage for the proposed site?
Not a specific list. I've come across a list of, or been aware of, a list of historical tenant types that buildings of this nature have been done by our company.
But not for this site?
Not a, not a specific list of tenants.
So, is it safe to say your testimony of the design of the building with 23 loading docks is because that's the maximum number that that property could handle? And nothing else was the determination?
It's a reasonable statement.
What about the size of the building? How was that determined?
Well, the size of the building has evolved based on the location of, prior, the location of the subdivision line that had been proposed and trying to maximize compliance with the ordinance requirements.
So, would this fall under the same category as your testimony on the loading docks? We figured out how big a building we could build and designed it accordingly?
I think that's, no, I mean, the whole process evolves and, you know, you're always looking at benefits and things that you might have to give up to just come up with a good functional building that would be marketable.
What was the, what was the benefit of building 132,000 plus or minus square foot building with 23 loading docks on that site?
It works with the number of parking spaces we could make work and, yeah.
And that's also based on how many parking spaces you could fit on the site at maximum?
I suppose, maximum.
Was there any consideration, Mr. Tyner, amongst the team to propose a building that looked similar to the one that Stryker Botanical currently has?
That wasn't a consideration that we took into account.
Did any discussion regarding such a possibility ever occur while the team was meeting to design this building?
No, I never had a conversation that said matched the other building.
Have no further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else from the board? Mr. Mary or?
Public.
Okay. Can I have a motion open to public?
So, move, Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Wagner made the motion.
Second.
Mr. Peason seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone from the public that would like to question the engineering witness on his testimony? Please feel free to come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. The chairman let the record also reflect that Mr. Tyner will be available for his testimony at the next meeting to discuss any exhibit that was not placed on civic law more than 10 days prior to tonight's meeting.
So, note it. Brian Tarantino, Fairfield Lane. So, Mr. Tyner, you said that Whitestone is a reputable firm. Did you submit any documents or indication that Whitestone is in fact a reputable firm? Is that in the record?
No.
Okay. And when one of, and you guys retained Whitestone, right? That's not, it wasn't, it was retained by the applicant?
Yeah, they're our subconsultant. We went through an RFP process and selected the one we chose.
You got to talk up, Mr. Tyner.
We went through a request for proposal process and then selected them based on all the proposals we received back from various consultants.
Were you concerned that the Environmental Commission suggested, stated that the, that your, that your consultant produced fraudulent data?
I was bothered by the statements. I don't know if concerned is the, I mean...
You were bothered, why?
I was bothered because engineering firms and engineers commit to an ethical standard where they would not besmirch other engineers based on the other engineer's engineering opinions, and so the Environmental Commission doesn't consist of engineers who would hold themselves to that standard, but engineering firms would not be critical of someone else who's putting their license on the line with respect to their opinions over engineering issues.
So, you're saying that unless you're an engineering firm, you can't criticize another engineering firm?
People can do whatever they want.
Oh. So, were you concerned at all that, that there might be something wrong with Whitestone based on the criticism from the esteemed Environmental Commission?
Was I concerned? No, I'm comfortable with Whitestone's work. I worked with them on many projects. In this one specifically, I was the one who understood the requests of the various entities or through the Environmental Commission and directed Whitestone to go out and do the further testing, that we wanted the legitimate data as it presented in the field and that, you know, I also, I think, shared with them that I stand by, I trust their work because I know that they were not intentionally fabricating data, and that I will continue to work with them on other projects.
And you submitted documentation of those things to the, to the record?
No, I'm just testifying to that because, based on the question.
Okay, because I didn't, I didn't see anything about that.
Yeah.
So, so when, when the Environmental Commission said, hey, this information, this, this data is fraudulent, you conducted an investigation about it? Or no? Did you dismiss it? It sounds like you dismissed it. Did you dismiss it or did you actually conduct an investigation?
I had conversations with the person from Whitestone about it, and I do trust his engineering ethics.
So, you did an investigation, so you're saying?
I don't know if you call that an investigation. I had a conversation.
Okay, did you document it? Is it documented?
Traces of it might be documented in terms of my responses to the various things that were submitted.
Okay.
But I probably don't have a record of that conversation with that individual.
So, you, you talked about the timestamp on the, on the report, I mean, on the, you know, the, the testing they did. And you said, hey, you know, it doesn't really, well, I don't know exactly the words you used, so correct me if I'm wrong, but you indicated that the exact time wasn't important.
No, I indicated that what was represented to me, and I believe it to be a reality, that a geotechnical consultant will go into the field and approximate those timestamps on one type of test that they do consecutively over and over again. That might not always be the case, but I'm not surprised that an engineering firm did that practice on an occasion.
Is that documented in the report, like there's a caveat, asterisk?
No.
These times may be approximate?
No.
Okay, so are there other numbers in your, in all of your reports and everything that might be not right?
No, that's not...
No, that's it? So, it's just those six, just those six or 12 numbers, whatever it was? That's it?
I guess.
Okay. Thanks.
Hi, Joe, can you hear me? Joe O'Connell, White Meadow Road. I, and listening to...
Mr. O'Connell, you might want to pick the mic out of the thing and hold it close to you rather than trying to lean into the stick.
Is this, that better?
Yep.
Okay. I get the impression when you're talking about the conservation easement and the wetlands area, because you seem to want to minimize that, and if you looked at, I just know from personal experience, because there is a conservation easement on my own property, that, especially considering last summer, it was very dry and you would never know what might occur at other times of the year. So, did you do any historical, did you look for historical data on why, why you want to change those wetlands and why you want to ignore part of that conservation easement?
So, I mean, if you don't mind if I embellish a little beyond your question?
You embellish a lot. Anyway, yes, go ahead.
The, the process that takes place in New Jersey is that a wetland consultant goes out and looks at today's conditions to define and delineate, it's called the word, delineate where the wetlands exist, and that's all they do. They won't look at historical, they might if there were other recent permits or something or other, what are called letter of interpretation documents, which a letter of interpretation is a commitment from DEP that they agree with the location that you've identified or delineated a line. So, what a wetland consultant does now is that they go and they delineate that, they use methods which are a combination of science and art, but they look at soil, they look at hydrology, they look at what kind of plant materials are out, and they flag off where they believe to be the wetlands in today's condition of the day that they're there. And that's what their job is, and then we take that information, we put it on a survey, and then we submit that to the NJDEP and with an application. And NJDEP then reviews that, they come and look at it, they either agree or disagree with the delineation. Many times, that consultant has to move that line based on what the DEP representative says to do, and then at the end, you get a document that says, this is where that line is. So, what's on our plans now in terms of where the wetlands are assumed to be is where the wetlands consultant defined today's conditions where the wetlands are. If they used to be further back and that could have been to our benefit, we don't look at that. We don't try to say, oh, they used to be back there, come on, just sign off on where they used to be back in the conservation easement. No, this has come out beyond the conservation easement, and so we're working around that constraint, which we believe to be accurate.
Okay. Then, and if I'm not mistaken, when, when you were talking about the direction of the loading docks and stuff like that, and you indicated that you basically put the loading docks or the, the direction that you put them was for best practices so that, in my interpretation, the water would run away from any problems that it might have if the ground is sloping. So, by running away from your property, it wouldn't necessarily run towards someone else's property, which might cause them problems, flooding issues, things like that. And if you are not aware, if, I mean, I'm assuming that, and maybe I'm wrong, you can correct me, I wish you would, that you did probably not ask around with the adjoining properties, especially residential, if they had reason to be concerned, like with my own property, I've seen literally a river go through my front yard twice, ida being once, another time, what was a complete downpour. And I would be able to say, yeah, you don't want to build here, or there's a reason for this conservation easement. Did anybody ask around why there was a conservation easement there in the first place and what ramifications by you minimizing that conservation easement it might have on other properties?
The purpose of conservation easement is, well, I mean, what, the function or what it's doing now in this is that you cannot construct anything on it, and so this application has avoided any construction on the conservation easement.
But you still have minimized it.
Well, we didn't, it, it's defined where it is. It's already been, it's like in the deed. The conservation easement is deeded, it's a part of the property.
Right, right.
So, I can't minimize the conservation easement. I just can't construct anything new on it. It's protected from construction.
Yeah, there's a reason for that. Okay, thank you.
Green Colmer, Taylor Avenue. During, just across, a question here, I heard a number of, there was a 6,000 reduction in stormwater. Boy, I don't have any of those words correct, but something about 6,000 came out in reduction. That's what I do know. Would you be able to classify or just to speak to that statement? Because it seems impossible.
So, so again, speaking to the, I didn't get into too much detail on this during my direct testimony because sometimes it's considered mundane, but the, so the quantity reduction requirement in the New Jersey stormwater regulations means that not, you don't necessarily have to reduce the quantity of stormwater leaving your site in any given storm event, but you have to reduce the peak flow rates, right? So, you've probably heard of this, a two-year storm is reduced 50%, 10 years reduced 25%, and the 100 years reduced 20%. But for the 100-year pre-volume, so what, by the benefit of the fact that we can infiltrate soils here, we have infiltrating soils and infiltrating rock, we actually will then retain some of the stormwater in the water quality layer, and that water will infiltrate into the ground. So, since some of the water is actually infiltrating, in the analysis, we actually are reducing the quantity of stormwater that leaves the site. So, the 100-year pre-volume of quantity that leaves the site in our analysis is 348,490 cubic feet. The post-quantity of the 100-year storm is 341,815 cubic feet. And so, that net 6,000 cubic foot reduction of the 100-year storm is what I was speaking to earlier.
Thank you for clarifying. What, is the water currently getting infiltrated in the ground right now?
I mean, if there was a low spot, it might.
How's it moving then in the area? And how is your building going to, like, help that?
Well, I mean, so water, there's a whole science to it, but water, when it lands on the, on a property, it flows downhill, and so that will run off, some of it will extract into the atmosphere, some of it gets caught on leaves, some of it does infiltrate. But most of that wouldn't be a significant infiltration unless there was some sort of low spot, pocket where the water gets caught.
Where's the water pocket getting caught right now on the property?
Not in our area of disturbance based on what I was looking at with these topographies.
Is that north? I just asked for a location.
I'm saying there wasn't, there isn't any.
There's none?
There's no existing area that appears to be a, an area where it's infiltrating significantly.
Okay, so it's going in the ground currently right now?
No, it's currently going over the surface down to a river.
Got it, okay. What is the calculated, well, how important is the volume calculation on a whole for the impervious coverage that you're going to do relative to, I don't know, to address any inevitable flooding event that's going to occur? So, there's going to be increased water that's on the surface right now that you're trying to mitigate. How is that volume you calculating to help mitigate any flooding?
Well, we calculate that volume and then we capture that in what's called a stormwater management facility or basin or BMP. In this case, the main one that handles the largest quantities of stormwater is called the large-scale bioretention basin.
Okay.
That basin captures that, and then the outlet control structure allows it to come out slowly over time back to that same river that the water used to go to anyway.
And that, if I'm correct, that is within 100 feet of a residential property?
It's within the, it's within the buffer of the property.
Within 100 feet of the residential property?
Yeah.
Okay. What, what considerations, I guess, were, were given during the team's development? What considerations, I guess, were given during the team's development of the water quality feature that we're just referencing of there relative to any adjacent residential property in that development?
That was the...
Why put it there? It's essentially what I'm getting at.
Yeah, well, because water rolls downhill, and this is a lower portion of the site that is conducive to being able to capture and that we could engineer around the project so that stormwater would successfully comply with the requirements, and that we would create a safe and effective stormwater management system.
Were there any discussions within the team to, any adverse effects during those discussions that could affect the residential property behind there?
I mean, early on conceptual plans didn't really take into account stormwater management at all. So us as the engineers are always saying, this is going to have to be smaller because we're going to have to do some more stormwater management. And then the new regulations were coming into effect back when this was proposed. And so we recognized that there was water quality limitations, that we had to actually capture this in what are called small-scale bioretention basins. And some of that information, we had maximum of 2.5 acres contributing to each of those that we now had to take into account, which had never been done in years past, but new regulations required. So we definitely took a lot of things into account.
Is it fair to say in your team's development that no considerations were given for any water quality feature relative to the residential property that was in the back?
I don't think that's a fair statement.
So is it fair to say that there were some discussions within the team's development to say that this water quality feature would be best placed adjacent to a residential property?
I don't think we spoke about it to that degree.
Well, it's either yes or it's no. I'm going to take a no on that one.
I guess.
Okay. Thank you.
David Brooks, Seven Winding Way. It's Tyner, Mr. Tyner?
Yes.
I just wanted to follow up on a few of those questions.
I can't hear you.
I just wanted to follow up on a few of the questions. You mentioned an additional report that Whitestone did, is that correct?
Whitestone had prepared several geotechnical reports.
So the report that Mr. Tarantino was referring to, as it related to the multiple tests, did they go back and retest those original test bits to confirm that information at all? The information that was called into question?
I'm having a hard time maybe recollecting, but I believe that the ones that were called into question were a whole new series of tests, basin flood testing was done. Because we, and this is again getting into like engineering nuance, but there's a discrepancy in the basin flood testing criteria in the BMP manual and how you go about it and how you can actually prove that you have adequate infiltration to a rate that's acceptable for your design criteria. And so having worked with DRCC and understanding that criteria, we came up with a basin flood test that actually did a more frequent observation of the water quality level at all new locations. Again, at the time, re-centered on the locations of the stormwater management features so that we would be putting them in the right spots for the requirements of the NJDEP criteria.
But the report that the Environmental Commission was talking about, that they had the concerns that the times were the same, the infiltration rates were the same, that report, did you or Whitestone ever go back and repeat those tests in order to verify the information?
So as of the last submitted Whitestone report, there has been no additional testing. I'll say that. And I'll say this, here's how basin flood testing works. You dig a pit, you fill it with a bunch of water, and you make sure that it's one foot of water, and then you come back in 12 hours, and then you come back 24 hours, and you see where it is. And so all you're doing is watching how deep the water, how much water's left in this pit that's down at the rock layer, right, to see if the rock actually fractures. And so whatever that is, that next reading 12 hours later, is one that you walk around to all of them and take. And so that's why it's happening almost simultaneously by one person, he's probably walking around to nine separate places. And the last data that was submitted, however it was presented, that's what it is. It stands on its merits. But I don't, I don't recall, we didn't retest the exact same locations. We might have come up with slightly new locations, approximate to where those other ones were. So it's getting better data in more diverse locations anyway.
I just need to clarify, you did retest with the same test or you did not retest with the same?
Basin flood testing was done twice, two separate mobilizations for basin flood testing.
And the concern that the Environmental Commission had was the first set of tests?
I believe so.
And so, I apologize, I haven't seen the second set. The second set of tests is in the record for us to look at at this point?
Yeah.
Okay. And did those show the same results as the first set of tests? In other words, the first set, there seemed to be some questions about, right, the same time, the same infiltration rates. What did the second set show?
Different results were found because you're limited to one result in a way, because it's like a pass/fail test. And you only get one reading.
They're sticking a tape measure in the water?
No, you start with a certain amount of water, and you don't watch it go down over time to figure out the exact rate that it went in. You just come back after a certain amount of time, and if it's empty, it passed and gives you that one result. So all the results are going to be the same because they are automatically one inch per hour.
Somehow the Environmental Commission staff didn't think that was the case, and they felt that getting all the same results raises questions with regards to...
I understand that, but they don't understand the basin flood testing.
The Environmental Commission, Chris Abrupta, I presume, didn't understand it, is that...
I don't think so.
Did you ever have a conversation with Chris Abrupta or any of the commission members with regards to why they felt that the information was questionable or maybe that's not even the right word?
No, but at the Environmental Commission meeting that I attended, I did try to explain the basin flood testing. And then they, I kind of got cut off and said, go do more testing. So that's kind of how it went.
I'll leave it to Mr. Julian to respond to that. You mentioned you had a conversation with someone at Whitestone regarding what the Environmental Commission raised as questions regarding the validity of the information, is that correct?
Yeah.
And do you recall that conversation with regards to, I think Mr. Tarantino asked you as far as memorialization of it, a memo, a phone log or something like that? Do you have something like that?
No, there was no memo of that.
Okay. Do you remember who you talked to?
Yes.
Can you tell me the name of the person?
Kyle Copaz.
And what role did Kyle play in the process of the testing?
He's the, I think of him as like the project manager, I guess.
Okay.
So he's certainly not the one on the site doing the testing in all cases, but occasionally I believe he is on site doing some of the testing.
And Kyle's a licensed engineer?
Yes.
What type of an engineer do you know?
Geotechnical.
Okay. Okay. With regards to this issue of timestamp, right, same time, same results, how would you account for that with regards to same time, same results?
The judge has asked and answered. You already answered us three times.
I don't recall what the answer was.
My witness not to answer your question for a third time.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure about that, but I would like to know how Mr. Tyner confirmed that this information was accurate.
Can I ask that question?
Mr. Tyner, how did you know the information was accurate?
I can trust the results of the consultant that provides the expert data to us to use because he's a licensed engineer who's doing something in a way that he is following all his best practice standards, and so I can trust that information. I rely on an expert to provide us with expert data.
Okay. In your personal experience, are you aware of any complaints that have been filed with the New Jersey Board of Engineers regarding Whitestone engineering?
I'm not aware of that, no.
Okay. With regards to the infiltration basin, the one that is to the west, the one that is the major one, I think you described it as?
Large-scale bioretention basin.
The large scale. You mentioned water infiltrating. Where does the water go when it infiltrates?
Into the ground.
Okay. Does it just go down or does it also go sideways?
I suppose that as it, when it's mounted at a certain elevation, some of it could go sideways into the side of the berm, but it wouldn't be conducive to do that because that's not a soil that's intended or designed to infiltrate the same way the basin bottom is designed to infiltrate. So the soils at the bottom are designed in a way that water will go through it. Whereas the hill is whatever native soils happen to be there, which would tend to have water not infiltrate. Now, some might, I'm not saying it wouldn't, I'm just saying that it's designed not to necessarily do that.
And just to clarify, because I'm not sure, and I suspect some of the board members might want to know, how deep below the current grade is that infiltration basin excavated to?
So at the, sorry, so at the south end, it goes from an existing approximately 106 down to 98. So it's an eight-foot deep, deeper than the existing grade at that end. Whereas at the other end, you are at the surface elevation approximately. So you have a 98 contour bottom of the basin, and the 98 existing contour actually cuts through there. So we build like a berm that holds the water behind it down at that end.
So in other words, you're taking into account the slope and you're raising the one side and you're cutting into the ground on the other side? Is that the way you would describe it?
I mean, this isn't necessarily the way it would have to have been, but it just turns out that at that end on the drawing, it's where the existing is, is where our bottom is, and we put a hill here, berm, something that holds the water behind it. And then at this end, we cut into the ground because that is a level bottom, 98 the entire way across. And then at this end, the existing was up at 106, so now we're down at 98 at this end. So you go down into the pit.
And that's the bottom of it. Now, are you filling it with certain material that encourages infiltration?
Yes, it gets overexcavated down to, down to the bottom of the, the bottom of the structure itself, the basin's, it's really consists of soil materials, but you take out the current fill and, or current material and put in a fill that's constructed in accordance with the BMP manual requirements.
And so I take it based upon the soil structure of the existing area where you're cutting through, water can infiltrate sideways, water can infiltrate downwards, the, is that correct?
Inside that fill, water could move in any direction, but obviously gravity brings it down.
I only ask that because I'm presuming that if the water pressure that builds up in that is going to go whatever way it can go, any inconsistencies in the soil, it'll go sideways or downwards, whatever way it can possibly go, is that correct way to analyze it?
Head pressure will push water in sideways directions, but again, as I kind of mentioned, the sides of the berm are not the same material as the bottom.
Right. The sides of the berm are the existing structure of whatever the soil and rock is.
Yeah, or there's going to be a soil that's less conducive to infiltration.
And the question was raised from another gentleman with regards to concern towards adjacent properties. Should we presume that if the water goes either sideways or down, if there is a weakness in the ground, like a foundation somewhere nearby, water could flow in that direction if it's going there and end up in a basement?
So part of the application analysis requires a mounding analysis. Mounding analysis is an analysis of what the groundwater mounding, the groundwater will do. So groundwater in general is at some elevation down below the ground, and when you put a bunch of water into it, it curves up, right? And so you're looking at where that mound will go and making sure that's not impacting anything negatively, so.
And so in that vein, when you talk about the mounding of the groundwater, were any calculations made from yourself or any of the engineers with regards to adjacent properties and whether you would have any of that mounding of groundwater flowing off of your property not where you wanted it to go? In other words, to the west to the residential property, did anybody do any calculations there?
We did the mounding analysis that's required by the BMP manual.
I don't want to sound disrespectful, but that didn't answer the question. Did you look at the adjacent property as to whether that would have any impact on the adjacent property?
I don't think it does.
Yeah, you're the engineer though. What do you base that on?
Well, the mounding analysis that we did tells me that that's not the case.
Are there, did you do calculations to confirm that?
Obviously, the mounding analysis calculations.
And that identified that it wouldn't go to the west?
That it's a safe and effective BMP as proposed.
Okay. There seems to be some concern with regards to that particular location of that basin. You indicated before that you chose that location because it's downhill. Is that correct?
Well, it's, it's low enough that it can create a successful system.
Okay.
Like I couldn't have done it if it was uphill.
I agree. And so I guess my question is that when I look at that site, when we look at that site, the prevalent flow of the ground before you build is to the right, and I guess that would be to the north. Is that my correct assessment? Do you agree with that? The wrong drawings up there.
Yeah, it's ultimately ending up in the north, north and kind of west of our site, or maybe really just the northern end.
Let's try it slightly differently for clarification purposes. The prevalent flow of the drainage is towards the area where you cannot build, is that correct? The property extends further over, if you can shift it over there.
Yeah, right.
The green stuff.
Right.
The prevalent flow is towards the green stuff.
The water goes over here.
Okay. And so let me ask you just...
I'm sorry, it's five after 10.
Just one more question if I may, Your Honor.
Please make it quick.
So one last question. As it relates to that particular structure, is there any reason why you would not be able to put it to the right, to the green stuff in that direction?
Conservation easement.
Well, I understand there's a conservation easement, but if there was a reconfiguration of the building, would you be able to fit it there?
There's hundreds of different possible designs that could occur.
So the answer is yes?
I would say yes. You can do different designs from what we've proposed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We've reached a little bit past 10 o'clock, so that's about time we conclude this evening's meeting. Obviously, the witness will be coming back at some point. Just some... Just some items for next time as, with regards to how we kick things off, get some clarification on who the official applicant is, the owner, the relationship outlined. The other question I have, and I'm going to leave this up to Mr. Bernstein, is since there's been applications already made to some governmental agencies, that we need to make sure the appropriate person or persons listed on those applications are still applicable and whether or not that could render those permits void?
I assume that will be addressed in the material as to who the applicant is per se, and we'll figure it out after I see it, whether or not that renders a potential issue. At first blush, don't believe there will be, but I'll...
Well, my ask is that we have everything resolved 10 days before the next hearing so that it's in civic clerk, including the traffic report.
We would just ask on behalf of the applicant for Mr. Bernstein or Mr. Coys or Mr. Hay to bullet point any specific information that we can supply rather than try to guess at what the board may want.
Can we get a copy of that? Can the Environmental Commission get a copy of that geotechnical testing submitted to them?
It was submitted to the township, didn't get distributed.
I'm not the submission person. I'm the man in the well. From the attorney's point of view, above and beyond what was discussed earlier, to follow up on the chairman's comments, if there are any applications that are currently pending before any governmental agencies and the party or parties who submitted them. I think Mr. Hay has his comments on the traffic.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to suggest that we do get an update on the wetland status to see where we're at with that, if there is a file number that's been produced administratively and where they are at in the process of it, and any comments generated that maybe the applicant's engineer can share for us. And then, of course, making sure we have a revised traffic report to address the issues I mentioned earlier, which I think are substantive, and we do need to get a further understanding of that to provide a better evaluation.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Coys, do we already, I would assume we have a date scheduled already?
We do.
Because I know a lot of these, we did two, three dates out.
We do. The next date we have?
May 11.
May 11.
Okay.
And there's a time of decision that was already, extension of time that was already signed, June 30.
To the end of June. Yeah, so we're okay. So, okay, just so...
Just a question. April 13, I have 303 Amwell, and I heard earlier Homestead Road LLC is on for that night?
Yep.
Well, that was pending if they have everything ready for the 13th, otherwise it was moved to the 25th.
20.
All right.
There were some conditions that we were waiting for.
Right, right. So we don't know if 303 is going to go on...
We don't know about 303 and don't know about Homestead.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So for the public, this application is going to continue on May 11, 7:00 PM without notice. So, do we have to extend? Okay. So do I have a motion to continue?
I'll make that motion.
Who made the motion?
Mr. Scoboe.
Okay, Mr. Scoboe made the motion.
Second.
Mr. hashtag seconded. Do we need to do a roll call, or can we do?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So just also a reminder, we do have our next planning board meeting on the 23rd. I know it's a business meeting traditionally, but we had to, another, I guess...
We have another prospective application.
Right. So with that, do I have a motion of adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. See you in a couple of weeks.